Okay, this regular meeting of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. And I just really want to extend everyone a warm welcome to those present and to our television viewers. The board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. I just ask that you turn your cell phones to silent if you have not already done so. We so appreciate the time that you have taken to join us and for your interest in Waco ISD. I also want to share for everyone present that all of our board meetings are available on the Waco ISD YouTube page the Monday following a meeting. YouTube offers the option to select your subtitle language, making the information presented here tonight available to everyone. Simply go to the settings via the gear icon, choosing subtitles and choosing your preferred language. Este junta regular de Waco ISD está convocada. Les extendo un amable bienvenidos a todos los que están presente y los que nos observan por la televisión. También quiero compartir que todas las conferencias están disponibles en la página de Waco ISD YouTube el lunes después de la conferencia. En esta página pueden escoger su idioma así toda la información que fue discutida está disponible para todos. Por favor, apájar su teléfono celular. Les agradecimos el tiempo que compartimos con nosotros y su interés en Waco ISD. It is my honor and my joy to get to introduce the University High School Mariachi Troyanos, who will be performing "Mea de Comer Esta Tuna" by Jorge Negrete. And I just wanted to give a special thank you to the band director Archie Hatton IV, who revitalized this program back in 2005. It is something that I grew up with, going to school and just when I saw the classroom close up, just something in my heart and my soul kind of came alive. And I was just so thankful. So I want to thank you, everyone who's here, and I cannot wait to hear the song.
Ya sé sin colar bolígrafo donde dormía la orilla. Ya sé sin colar bolígrafo donde dormía la orilla. Y en el suelo, aura dorada. Y en el suelo, aura dorada. Y en el suelo, como cualquier animal.
Thank you. Let's give another round of applause. Thank you, the Mariachi Troyanos. Beautiful. Thank you so much. What a wonderful celebration of the National Hispanic Heritage Month. So thankful for all the work that they've done. And I heard this was their first performance of the year. So they did a fantastic job. Okay, next we have public comments, and we have one person signed up. Thank you, Monica. Okay, we have the timer, three minutes. Is Hope Garretti. Hope, you have three minutes. I don't see her. Oh, there she is. Okay. There it is. Okay, great.
Thank you guys so much. My name's Hope Garretti. I teach at Waco High School, also Waco ISD parents. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about the new building, but first off, let's tell you a story quickly. I got to run off of the Lions Field with all five of my children when we heard gunfire erupt. And a dozen parents were running for cover with all of our kids together. But we came back and played that Saturday because I didn't want to give strength to fear, I wanted to give strength to my faith. For that, for me, that means Jesus Christ. And I know that that doesn't mean that for everyone, but I'm hoping that the elements of faith in good and evil can be universal. On the 13th, we had a scare, but I knew that as I was placing my body between potential danger and my students, there were four other teachers that were doing it at Lake Air for my children, because I know the heart of our district. I know that the safety concerns are valid. I have them too. I've thought about bulletproof inserts for the backpacks of my kids. I've dreamt of metal detectors. But I'm hoping in the midst of all of this in our country, in our world today, that we can still have an appreciation for the gift that this new building is going to be for our community. Because I do believe that our community values both the minds and the safety of our kids, because the 13th showed us that too. Architecture is inhabited sculpture. There's psychology and color and light. Our new building will be clean and fresh and modern and functional and welcoming and beautiful. And that's why I'm so grateful that this district has placed a great priority on the mental health of our kids through the Character Strong Program. They've set aside time that I am required to do social-emotional learning with my kids, and I love that. And they had me crying this week with the things that they shared, and I'm not a crier. But I just want to make sure that we're pouring money and time into those programs that build the mental health of our kids, because I want that for my children in this district as they grow up in this district. Because I don't think our strength will be found in barricades. I think evil will find a way. Evil can find a way in an open football field or a baseball field. But our strength is in our heart. And that's, I just want everyone to remember to be grateful for this gift that we've been given. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garretti. Okay, if you would please pause with me as we take time for prayer, contemplation, reflection, and/or meditation. Next on our agenda, we have special recognition pledge leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored.
If the board would meet me down in the front of the dais for a special recognition.
Each month, one campus selects two students to lead the Pledge of Allegiance at the regular business meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. For the month of September, we have Jesús De La Fuente and Steve Owens from Andean Carver, who are selected for this honor. Jesús is in the sixth grade and his favorite subject is math. In his spare time, he practices martial arts and plays soccer. Principal Lewis says that Jesús is super funny and loves to make people laugh. When he grows up, Jesús wants to be a famous soccer player. Thank you to his parents, Janet and Jose De La Fuente Sr., for sharing your amazing son with us. Steve Owens is in seventh grade and his favorite subject is also math. He's in the band and is a fan of TikTok. Steve aspires to be a lawyer when he grows up. Thank you, Mr. Steve Owens, for sharing your wonderful son with us. Students receive a designation of Advanced Placement Scholars or AP Scholar through their hard work and high academic achievement in AP courses and exams. There are three designations: AP Scholar, AP Scholar with Honors, and AP Scholar with Distinction. AP exams are scored on a one-to-five scale, and scores of three or better earn the student college credit for their course at most universities across the United States. The award for AP Scholar is awarded to students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. Waco ISD has a total of 32 students who have earned one or more of these awards. AP Scholars for University High School and Waco High School are as follows. Miriam Hinajosa. She is a University High School senior. Leila Lopez, she's a University High School 2022 graduate. Andres Levano, University High School junior. German Ruiz, University High School senior. Karen Salazar, University High School senior. Elizabeth Sanchez, University High School 2022 graduate. Jennifer Zuniga, University High School graduate. Samuel Everett, Waco High School junior. Cheryl Fast, Waco High School 2022 graduate. Noah Garner, Waco High School 2022 graduate. Noah Monreal, Waco High School 2022 graduate. Viviana Ramírez, Waco High School 2022 graduate. Hudson Rice, Waco High School senior. If you're here, please come up and receive your certificate. Yes, if your name is called, please come up and receive your certificate. Cohen Scott, Waco High School junior. Elena Sharam, Waco High School senior. And I'd like to invite Elijah Sharam's parents up to receive his certificate since he is not with us today. Noah Sutton, Waco High School 2022 graduate. Our AP Scholar with Honors is awarded to students who receive an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. James Bernius, Waco High School senior. Libby Hack, Waco High School senior. Alicia Ramírez, Waco High School 2022 graduate. Daniel Swanky, Waco High School 2022 graduate. AP Scholar with Distinction is awarded to students who receive an average of at least 3.5 on all AP exams and score three or higher on five or more of these exams. Maricela Suarez, University High School 2022 graduate. Bailey Barton, Waco High School 2022 graduate. Kayla Carson, Waco High School 2022 graduate. Kayla Chu, Waco High School senior. Lily Kaufman, Waco High School 2022 graduate. Helen Goodman, Waco High School 2022, I'm sorry, senior. Xander Lim, Waco High School 2022 graduate. Sarah Schlapp, Waco High School senior. Talia Tran, Waco High School 2022 graduate. And Abigail Zimmerman, Waco High School 2022 graduate. Next, we're going to recognize our College Board National African-American and Hispanic Recognition Awards. In August 2022, the College Board is awarding 62,000 students from across the country with academic honors from College Board National Recognition Programs for excelling in their classroom and on College Board assessments. More than 180,000 students from all 50 states were eligible to apply for the College Board National Recognition Programs, which grant students with academic honors. Colleges and scholarship programs identify students awarded National African-American, Hispanic, Indigenous, and/or rural or small-town recognition through College Board Student Search Service. Three Waco ISD students are being recognized for the National African-American Recognition Award, and seven students are recipients of the National Hispanic Recognition Award. Seven of the 10 of these students are also superintendent scholars. University High School recipients are as follows. Please come up when your name is called. Archie Hatton for the National African-American Recognition Award. National Hispanic Recognition Award, Carla Suarez. The Waco High School Award recipients are the National African-American Recognition Award, Deborah Hammond. Recipient of the National Hispanic Recognition Award, Brandon Vega. Grab a group photo. Next, we are going to recognize our Texas Art Education Association District of Distinction awardee. Waco ISD has successfully submitted all required materials with fidelity and will be named the Texas Art Education Association District of Distinction. Over 1,200 districts were eligible to apply for the Texas Art Education Association Visual Arts Award, and just 59 districts will receive this outstanding honor for 2021-2022 academic year. This distinction places WISD visual arts programming in the top 5% in Texas. The district is one of only 16 school districts to receive this honor for four consecutive years, each year that the distinction has been available. Director of Fine Arts Larry Carpenter is here to receive the award, and I'd also like to ask any of our visual arts teachers in attendance to please stand and then come up for a group photo as well, please. And last, but certainly not least, we have our Community Partner Award. Each month, Waco ISD recognizes a community partner for making a difference. For students, with the Waco ISD Award for Outstanding Community Partners, the recognition celebrates the theme for the 2022-2023 school year "Lead From the Heart" and acknowledges the impact that our partners make in the lives of our students and staff. In September, the district is recognizing AbbVie. AbbVie is a biopharmaceutical company with a culture of a biotech. They embrace the responsibility of making remarkable impact on people's lives. AbbVie is driven by their compassion for people, commitment to innovation and inclusion, service to the community, and uncompromising integrity at the heart of everything they do. As part of their service to the community, AbbVie recently gifted 150 school supply boxes to Waco ISD first-year teachers at the beginning of the 2022-2023 school year. They also donated additional supplies to students. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Okay, next on the agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. King Cannon.
Good evening, everyone. Want to say thank you again to the University High School Mariachi Troyanos, did I say that correctly, performers. What a great way to kick off tonight's meeting. Proud to say that our campuses are doing a wonderful job of honoring Hispanic Heritage Month with special displays, festivals, and activities that both celebrate and educate students about the Hispanic culture, traditions, and history. Featured in these photos from last week are Cesar Chavez Middle School. They open their doors to the community, inviting both students and families to enjoy special celebration with fun traditional activities and delicious food items. Still ahead, in October, the Fine Arts Department will host a pop-up event at Tennyson Middle School, and both Kendrick Elementary School and Mountain View Elementary School are planning community celebrations. Thank you to our teachers and campus administrators who are engaging our students and community in these fun, important activities. Next item is appreciation of our first responders, and I'd like to pause for a moment this evening. Next item is appreciation of our first responders, and I'd like to pause for a moment this evening to thank all of the first responders who rushed to Waco High School on September 13th, not knowing what they would encounter, but resolved to protect our students and employees. More than once after the terrible tragedy in Uvalde, I overheard people asking our police chief how law enforcement would respond if something similar happened here. After this hoax at Waco High, we know that they will not hesitate in the face of uncertainty and possible danger. Since that afternoon, teachers have told me that the response was both impressive and reassuring, and I want to thank the agencies whose actions earned their confidence, starting with our own police department. Thank you, Chief Williams. I'm grateful for your leadership, for the leadership of Lieutenant Freeman and Sergeant Walkman, and for the professionalism, the dedication, and student-first focus of your entire department. Could we give Chief Williams a round of applause? Also want to thank the City of Waco Police Department, especially Chief Cheryl Victorian, Commander Verrill George Jr., and Commander Jerris Wallace, the City of Waco Fire Department, American Medical Response, the Waco McLennan County Office of Emergency Management, McLennan County Sheriff's Department, McLennan County Constable Precinct 1, the Lone Star Task Force, the Hewitt Police Department, the Texas Department of Public Safety, the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives, and the Federal Bureau of Investigation. It's an impressive list. The agencies that responded to Waco High were the most visible part of the response, but there were a number of others who jumped into motion when the call for help went out. In addition to the ambulances and supervisors on the scene, American Medical Response had air ambulances en route to the high school that were turned around when it was discovered that there was not an active threat at the school. By that same time, doctors and nurses at our local hospitals had already scrubbed in and prepared operating rooms to receive patients. A number of other McLennan County law enforcement agencies had personnel headed to the school when dispatchers turned them around, and several police departments reached out to our department to see if any assistance was needed at other campuses. That collaboration has continued after the incident, as we've met to debrief and learn from our experience. It's also a hallmark of the multi-agency investigation to discover who was responsible for the hoax and to hold that person or persons accountable. Finally, I want to thank Wes Allison and the Extracol Event Center team for their assistance in opening up the base for our students and families. We are looking forward to recognizing them in October as our Community Partner of the Month. Does anyone have any comments or questions about that item?
I think I would love to say, with that incident, I don't think anyone on this board didn't want to respond. I think we all started flooding Ken Cannon immediately with text messages and pumping her with text messages, and so much so, there was, I think, everyone on this board is so thankful for our first responders, the way that they handled the situation, Chief Williams, I mean, I think Keith Gilery in the fire department. It really was a collaborative effort, and Kyle, thank you for your administration, getting the messages out right away. I mean, I got a phone call right away informing me and updating me, and so I'm just so thankful. No one wants to practice this, but I'm glad we've had an opportunity to be able to see our multi-agency law enforcement and everyone spring into action right away. I've said it before, and I will continue to say it again, this community will get behind their students no matter what. They'll get behind the kids of this community no matter what, and I've seen it with the bond, I've seen it with this hoax at Waco High, and I am so thankful. I think everyone on this board, if we could have, we would have done something right away. I think Jeremy Davis was asking Ken Cannon, "All right, what kid did it?" wanting to find out. You know, I think everyone was wanting to pitch in and help, and so, just so thankful. Chief Williams, it is without a shadow of a doubt, we know that you and your team have practiced and understand the dynamics and are very keenly aware and very quick to act. So, we're very thankful for you and your team.
Next item is Leadership Development Programs. I know you all had an opportunity to review the district improvement plan. There's a whole section on leadership capacity in the plan, but I wanted to mention our leadership development programs and just highlight this for a second. We, you know, in addition to building the capacity of our current leaders, we have developed and are continuing to refine plans to proactively identify talent and nurture talent so that we have a pipeline of leaders who are ready to serve when vacancies occur, and that's been an important focus of the work that we have done with Holdsworth. So, there are three groups of future leaders that I want to talk about for just a second, and there are three programs that we have going. The first is an academy for aspiring school leaders. Dr. Gutierrez started this, and actually she has, already has a second cohort going, and so Cohort Two is starting now as we're in our third year of our aspiring leaders program. It's a two-year professional learning experience for high-potential leaders who are seeking to become a principal or an assistant principal in the near future, and we have employees apply for the program, they're interviewed and selected, and this group has been going, they're in their second year, and we have seven participants who are still working through that program with Dr. Gutierrez. We also have a Cohort Three group that is going, will be going. We're accepting applications for that group in October, and that group is being led by Dr. Lopez, Dr. Warren, Ms. Carradine, and Dr. White, who'll be providing leadership and support to train Cohort One, and that program consists of nine sessions. And then finally, this summer, we started a Teacher Leader Academy, and that's a year-long professional development program for teachers who want to advance, and often that is into a campus leadership role for positions such as instructional specialist, team reach teacher, a master team reach teacher, or a multi-classroom leader. And we partnered with ESC 12 this summer to assist us with training and throughout the year of that group, and they are working through topics on leadership competencies, instructional practices, and other skills, and we're really excited about them. So, I wanted to mention those this evening. All of our employees are able to apply for those programs, but they are selected, interviewed, and selected, and chosen to participate. And then finally, summer graduation, I wanted to mention, feels like it was a very long time ago, September 1st, we held graduation at University High School. There were 42 students who graduated, 13 from Brazos High School, 17 from University High School, and 12 from Waco High School. It was a great evening, as you can see in the pictures, for our graduates and their families, and I'd like to thank David Hamilton for organizing the ceremony, and we had with us that evening Vice President Vedanya and trustee Iazetti. Thank you for being there to help us award diplomas. We appreciate you. That's all I have.
Okay, we will move on to Consent Agenda. Is anyone wanting to pull any items from Consent?
I would.
Great.
Which one?
Item M.
Okay. Are there any other items that would like to be pulled? Okay, great, yeah, and I'll pull K as well. So...
K.
Okay. All right, I will entertain a motion to accept the Consent Agenda as presented except for 6K and 6M.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda as presented except for K and M. Second.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Grant, is there any discussion over this agenda, the Consent Agenda? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will, Consent Agenda passes unanimously. We will move on to 6K. 6K, so the six...
Glory, I think.
K. Sorry. K as in kite.
Good evening, Dr. Ken Cannon, Madam President, Board members. I love starting off with mariachis. Could we do that every time? That's awesome. Okay, item 6K is Approval of Allowance Expenditure Authorization (AEA) Number Two for GW Carver Middle School. And this item is related to some requests that the city made after we had already bid the project. And so, during the design phase, the architect met with the city, and they reviewed the plans with them, and then usually the city will tell us pretty much everything they want us to include there, but sometimes things come up later, and this was one of those things that came up later. So, you might also notice that you have a revised backup document at your seat, and that is because as we were working through the details, we found that we had, we were able to reduce the price a little bit. So, we went from $177 to $164. So, that was a little bit of a late change. This kind of thing we planned for in our project, we have allowance to pay for it, but because the amount is so high, it's over $100,000, that requires it to come to the Board of Trustees for approval. It is not a time extension, and the money will be paid for within the contract that we have, so there's no increase.
Great. I will entertain a motion for the Approval of Allowance Expenditure Authorization (AEA) Number Two for GW Carver Middle School. The updated information, I think, was at the dais when we came and sat down. So, entertain a motion.
I can move, motion to approve the Allowance Expenditure Authorization (AEA) Number Two for GW Carver Middle School.
Okay, thank you, trustee Davis. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Vedanya. Is there any discussion over this?
I want to make sure we have the motion correct, so I'm looking for the memo. I'm looking over at our attorney back there, so making sure I get that correct.
Yeah, it says four on the AEA. The number says four, not two.
Oh, four.
But it says two on the front.
It says two on the front.
It says two on the front, and it says four in the back.
Okay, so I read the one from the front, number two. That's the correct one. Okay, so, approve the Allowance Expenditure Authorizations authorizing the use of the established allowance and contingency funds for the execution of work associated with city commons required for the completion of the new construction of GW Carver Middle School. Just to be clear, that's what we have made a first. Trustee Davis did the first motion, trustee Vedanya did the second. Entertaining any discussion? Okay, we'll take it to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you, Mrs. Barera. And the next item here is 6M Resolution Regarding Bullet-Resistant Shield Grant Program. Chief... And Dr. Gutierrez, thank you.
I want to say thank you guys for everything that you do for us. We really appreciate it. We've been given an opportunity with the things that are going on with Uvalde, with the governor, offering grants for the bulletproof shields, and also offering grants for the travel expenses for the alert training for the officers that are going to be equipped with these shields. What we've done is we've asked for eight shields, and the purpose for the eight shields are to have one at each secondary campus, one with each of our patrol units, and one at our JJ AEP. So, we will be able to strategically place them and be able to cover the entire district if, you know, a situation were to arise where we would need to use those. We're asking if you guys could review this, the grant, and give us your best wishes with this, because we have to have it approved by you guys before we're able to actually be considered for the grant. This is something that has to be done expeditiously, because the sooner we give the grant in, the more likely that we will have precedence over the funds that we receive versus, you know, everyone in the state of Texas. Anyone have any questions for me?
I do. So, what's the functional application of, the functional application of ballistic shields? What do you, their use?
The use of the shield? It's for, say, last Tuesday when we had to make entry into the Waco High School, you know, if someone is shooting back at us, you know, like the guys you see there in Uvalde, they were waiting for shields to make entry. So, we're actually going to use that shield to continue into the building, because with that shield, there's a lot of rifle ammo that will compromise just these vests that we have on. And so, with that shield, we're able to continue on and not worry about our vests being compromised.
So, your vest, they have a lifespan on, about what, your vest?
Yes, sir.
Your kevlar vest, that's a lifespan on those? So, what's the lifespan?
Five-year lifespan on this vest here.
And on the shields, what's the lifespan?
On the shield, it's 15 years.
And will this be a stock item for the department moving forward, that the district will be responsible for supplying?
Well, that will be up to the district, but we will request that.
So, this is for, I just want to make sure, so the functional application is for an active shooter inside of the school? Y'all are going in?
It's for an active threat. It could be a shooter, it could be anything else, because it's a multitask unit. If we were having a riot, we would be able to use these shields as well. So, it would be a multitask.
A riot inside the school?
If we were having riots or anything, or at the football stadium, anywhere inside the district, it's going to be a functional tool to be able to use throughout the district and not just single to an active shooter event.
And when did y'all turn the application in for the grant?
We turned the application in on Monday, the 19th.
19th. So, y'all were considering this, when we had our last discussion about the safety of the schools, y'all were considering bringing in ballistic shields, when we were talking about ballistic protection for our students before. See, this was already in play.
We were talking about bringing in ballistic shields back in 2018 when I became Chief of Police.
Absolutely, and I agree with you, and I agree about the ballistic shields, I do. But I'm looking at, you all have vests, long guns, handguns, helmets, tactical gear, and all those things, and y'all still need ballistic shields to go in, but we did not choose to put in the protections that we asked for last time. I just want to leave it there. I agree with you.
Well, I can answer that question if you'd like. I will tell you this, it doesn't matter what gear we have, I don't have to have a vest on, and my team doesn't have a vest on. We're going to go in and protect the kids regardless.
I'm aware of that, I'm showing the protections.
We're just asking, because we all have families as well, and we'd like to come home to our families.
Absolutely, I agree with you.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
It says that the district will have to match up to $26,000. I was just wondering, how much are we putting up for this training, and how much are we putting up for the shields? And did we, was the grant as one, or did you apply for one grant for the training and one grant for the shields, and how did that process work? Like, how did we decide that we needed both grants? Did we apply for both grants, and how much will the district have to match in funds? Because, yeah, I just...
We're going to ask for the full amount, but when the grant is, when and if the grant is awarded, they may give us partials, so we were just preparing to pay something if needed, but we are going to request the full amount, and we are going to apply for the travel assistance grant, but we wanted to get the resolution signed. We have more time for that grant. The last grant was due last Monday on September 19th, and we had to submit that, and we can add the resolution afterwards.
So, the amount that we apply for, if we're awarded that amount, how much will the district have to match in that situation? Or how much do we... Or how much do we anticipate matching? Because $26,000 seems like a lot of money to match in a grant for six shields that we haven't had and we just congratulated us for the great response we just had. So to me, $26,000 sounds like a lot of money and I know we're struggling financially right now, so.
We're going to ask for double that amount and we're going to hope to get the full amount.
It was a quick turnaround. I, I, someone sent out the notification for the grant and I sent it to Dr. Gutierrez and Chief Williams and asked them to please submit the grant because we'd already talked about some needs in the department. And so we had a tight turnaround time to get that in. And I, I could go back and see what the email was on the date that I sent that to them, but it was not very long ago.
Are there any other questions? Yes.
No, I just want to say, I agree with you as far as the application. I just want consistency and I want the same protections for our kids that we're going to give to you.
Is there any?
Yeah, I do. So the matching of the funds, that's for both grants? We would have to match or is that just for the shield grant?
We're going to ask for the full amount for both grants, but it's just in case they don't, they may give us, they may grant us the full amount. They may say, here's three quarters of it. We're not sure.
How much is in the full amount is 26,000 that you apply for?
That's 50% of it.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the bullet-resistant shield grant program as presented.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Guillory. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Ochoa. I kept thinking Angelo, Angelo. Ochoa, thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Is there any more discussion? Any further discussion? Okay, we will entertain a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. And let me get my bearings here. Okay, we will move on to number seven, review and discuss the sale of unlimited tax bonds. Series 2022 be present. Dusty Trailers. Nice to see you again.
Good evening, everyone. Again, for the record, Dusty Trailer, Managing Director with RBC Capital Markets. We have the honor and privilege of representing Waco ISD as Municipal Advisor on your bond sales. We were recently in the market to sell the second piece of the bonds that were voted in November, and so I'd like to just give a presentation on, on the sale of those bonds. I think as, as many on the board will recall, the board approved a parameters resolution that delegated the authority to district staff to proceed with the sale of, of this tranche of the bonds back in August. At that point, we were well into the process of preparing for the sale of the bonds. We're working closely with Ms. Davis and your team here at the district, Dr. Kincanon, on preparing the permanent school fund guarantee application, preparing a new preliminary official statement offering document for the prep, for the sale of the bonds, and then also visiting with the municipal bond rating agencies as part of that, as part of that process. We were in the market to sell these bonds on August the 30th of this year. This slide you see before, he's kind of gives a little summary of the, the transaction. On that date, we, we sold bonds with a par amount or principal amount of bonds of 72,885,000. But because of a premium paid by the investors in the bonds, we're able to deliver to the district's project fund actually a full $75 million. The bonds, if you look a little further down, the, the delivery date, following that sale, your, your bond attorney worked the transaction through the Texas Attorney General's Office for their review and approval. We received that, that approval and were able to deliver the proceeds to the district's bank account yesterday on September 28th. The bonds will have a first coupon or first interest payment date on February 15th, 2023. And the first optional redemption date, first call date, when we could potentially refinance those bonds would occur on August 15th, 2031. That's about a nine-year call feature. I think we've talked about that before. Many times municipal bond investors require 10 years of call protection. We negotiated that down a little bit to give the district hopefully more flexibility in the future. Under the ratings section, participated in conference calls with Moody's, they affirmed the AA2 bond rating of the district. That is a very solid bond rating and allows for you guys to have good success in the bond market. You couple your AA2 rating with the state's AAA and it gives investors a lot of confidence in Waco ISD bonds. The all-in interest rate on the bonds, all-in TIC is a 4.04%. Then you can see down below just kind of the participants in the transaction. Our sales is Financial Advisor, Bracewell is Bond Counsel. Then the underwriters are represented by two different attorney legal firms. Then the senior managing underwriter was Oppenheimer, followed by co-managers RW Baird, BOK, and Cabrera Capital Markets. You see the, the document there to the right of that page, that's just the cover page of the securities offering document that was used to sell the bonds. Your team does a fantastic job of helping prepare that document and reviewing that document and making sure that it's accurate and complete before getting it out in front of investors. The next slide here, we just show the sources and uses of funds, what I talked about on the, on the page before. You see their principal amount of the, the bonds of 72.885 million of sources and then a premium of 2.777 million. That allows you to have that project proceeds of $75 million going into the bank account. And, and thus far, I would just, just tell you through both sales of your bonds, the sale back in February, as well as this sale in August, we've been able to max out the allowed proceeds coming to the district. So you guys voted $355 million worth of bonds. The dollar amounts that we've sold so far, I believe it's 275 million in proceeds. That amount has been placed in the district's project account to hopefully maximize the dollars available for your projects. The slide here just shows our, our debt service schedule here for the district. What I would point out there is actually in 2024, our debt service falls a little bit. That's going to help us accommodate the remainder of our bonds that are to be sold. We anticipate selling those in 2023. And then this next slide is, is kind of a neat slide. It's, I say it's a neat slide. I'm a bond guy, so bear with me. Things I think are neat, you got to worry about sometimes. But this is, this is the graph of each individual maturity of the bonds that were sold on the date of sale. And so we were monitoring this, your team was monitoring this, my underwriting staff was monitoring this. And what you see are these, this graph beginning to get filled in as the day goes on, as investors are placing orders in real time for your bonds. And so as I said, we sold bonds with a total par amount of 72.885 million, but you actually had investors place orders for these bonds totaling 237.46 million. So you had more orders for bonds than we had bonds available and that helped us be able to go back to the investors and tighten up those interest rates, get a little bit lower interest rate out of them from when we first went out. Some of the investors that invested in these bonds are some of the bigger names on Wall Street and, and bigger names that invest in, in PSF bonds. And it's a great representation of the credit quality of Waco ISD. You had State Farm in here buying these bonds, Goldman Sachs Asset Management, Eaton Vance, Nuveen, Frost Banks, we're, that's just some of the, the names of, of players that were buying your bonds and holding them. So they're, you know, big players and it, it means that they believe in your credit worthiness. And then just showing you here on this page, just kind of a scale of our municipal bond rating scale. You guys rate with Moody's at that AA2 level, that's just two notches below the natural AAA. In that, in their report, Moody's, you know, noted a few credit strengths that I want to point out. Positive operations and strong reserves, low fixed costs. And one of, they typically always make some comment about kind of the general local economy. And so they note a strength of, of Waco ISD is the presence of Baylor University and the, just the strong employment base that, that's present here and that is part of it. Credit challenges, I think we, we're all aware of some of those things that, that we face, when, you know, enrollment and things like that, that would ultimately one day boost, could potentially change and boost the rating of the district. All in all, though, we were very excited to be able to get this tranche of your bonds done when we did. And again, that's a testament to your team, your team here, working so strongly and quickly to get this done. Since the date of sale, were we to have, let's just say we were selling today versus when we sold at the end of August, we probably would have ended up paying about one-half of 1% higher interest rates. That translates into significant amount of interest over the life of the bond. So your action, your team's action helps save the taxpayers of Waco ISD material dollars. So congratulations. Any questions?
Any questions?
Going into, to number two, looking at the economy and the way that it is now, what does those, those, those future bond sales, what does that look like to you?
Well, you know, it's one of those deals where if I could tell you what interest rates were going to be, if I could tell you what, exactly what interest rates were going to be tomorrow, I probably wouldn't be here. I'd be doing something else. But, but we design these bond programs with conservative estimates of interest rates such that if rates continue to rise, we've got some levels of conservatism built into our debt service models so that we're hopeful, we're able to hit that tax rate promise that you made to the, to the local taxpayers. I mean, there's, you, you bet though. I mean, we all are reading the news. There's, there's likely additional upward pressure on interest rates, but we've all seen things change too, so. What?
I want to hear you forecast.
Yeah. You wanted to see me dance, I think.
I do have a question. You said the last round was going to be sold in 2023. Do you have a time in 2023 in mind?
We want to, we want to visit closer with, with the district and your team and look at your cash flow needs as the construction process moves along and things like that. And if maybe there is an opportunity in early 23, if we get a dip in interest rates, maybe we have the flexibility to, to move in and get that tranche sold. We also want to kind of get an idea, better idea going into 2023 of what next year's tax values are going to look like. So we want to be a little bit, a little bit flexible. But I, I would foresee that, that that, those bonds would be sold before this time next year.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Dusty.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Great to see everybody.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we will move on to item eight. Ms. Barretta, consider discuss and take appropriate action regarding the guaranteed maximum price, GMP number two, Waco High, and plan modifications outlined in manager proposal package.
Good evening again. So I'm, I'm joined here with Jared Sturzinger and Doug Dawson. And we're, it's a big deal right now for Waco High School. This is GMP number two. This GMP will finish the contract approval process for Waco High School and we're in budget and that's a big deal. So before we get started, we've asked Jared to make a little bit of, bit of presentation and I'm going to jump in at some point to just kind of give you a, an overview of the process.
Of course Gloria stole the good news here at the end, so. But today, we, we did want to talk a little bit about, kind of talk about what's been happening. You heard just a, a tinge of it from Rusty and his side. We wanted to go a little bit deeper as well. And of course, we really want to start this process as we talk about the facilities master plan of something that we started two years ago. We were all on screens at the moment, but really deep community engagement and really thinking about creating a great place for Waco ISD, places for opportunity, places to really push things forward and, and really continue to breathe new life into the district. And we want to keep that vision here as we move forward and how did we do that? What we didn't anticipate at the time was what would happen in the construction marketplace and is something that we've been hearing. They wanted to provide just some real world data, not only from, from what we know, but also from the industry partners. So here on the screen, you see, it's from the AGC Associated General Contractors. They put out reports or have been putting out reports. There are other contractors, other entities that are putting out similar reports. What you will notice is the graph on the right is trending upwards and that's individual materials. You'll see that, you know, the top one there, diesel fuel, 267% or 237% increase over the last two years. Diesel is something that touches almost every single product within the construction project because you're getting it shipped, you're operating machinery onsite. Ultimately, that's affecting the cost of the projects as they're constructed today. You can go through each one of those items. Thankfully, you'll see some of them are starting to crest down, like structural steel and some of those items. So we're hopeful that the market will, will get better in terms of a bidding climate, but it is something that we're aware of day in, day out, you know, in actual practicality of what this means for the projects. As we talk about, you know, outside of materials, as we talk about what's happening with the industry overall, this isn't something that is affecting central Texas. It's really affecting Texas and overall the national market over, across the world. You'll see here then the graph on the top is, is projects that we've been tracking over the last 20-plus years. Those are separated into new campuses, so you can kind of see how the trend lines there, of course, are, are moving up over time with a pretty steep increase here as we've reached the last couple of years. Below, you'll see then a list of about 10 projects that we've bid in the last six months that have gone to market and you'll see that they range anywhere from, that are, or I'll say it's projects that have gone to market. Not all of them are, are our projects, but they are somewhere between 20%, 100% over budget. And it, there's not, I'll say, a rhyme or reason along the way. We try and figure that out, but it is impactful across the board for, for what we're here today. As you know, we had, just in a parallel story, have gone through this exact same process with Carver Middle School and worked similar strategies as we moved forward. The good summary there is at the top is we were at a budget of 63 million. We hit a base bid of $61.6 million, but ultimately the GMP, we were able to add alternates into the project at $62.9 million, so just underneath that budget. How did we do this? We, we addressed it with multiple GMPs to allow to get products in place at the right time. We had the base bid in alternates to control the, the bids at what I call like game day pricing. And ultimately, we went in through some early decisions about structural systems, budget and scoping and value engineering items where we're looking at alternative products that aren't affecting the quality or the longevity or the usability of the facilities. And those are the things, especially as we talk about Waco High School, that we're going to be talking about here as well. You'll see, if, if you haven't had a chance, it's a picture of Carver as it stands right today. Just a little shout out for that one, that they're in drilling peers and moving forward in construction.
Can I, can I interrupt you? Our sheet says original budget 61.95, but this is the correct number?
This is the correct number, yes. That was a error we caught as well. So then Waco High School. So we've heard about the construction marketplace. We've heard about the, the Carver and how we address that, other projects, what's happening with Waco High School. You'll see here, this is one of the, the most recent renderings, the new front door to the campus. If you've been onsite, they're starting construction there as well, starting to have this become reality with GMP one that was approved a few months back. Overall, as we talk about that vision, again, going back to the facilities master plan of leading and, and creating a facility that's moving forward, here similar at Waco High School, we developed a specific mission about, you know, about creating a vision for Waco High School that's founded in the history and making sure that we're accountable for safely constructing the highest quality education facility. We know it's an active campus. We've got to have that, making sure that the construction process goes well. But then you see all the goals and I'll just point out the middle goal, right there in the middle, is that we're on time and in budget. And it's taken a lot of effort to get here today and we'll talk about schedule and budget here as we move forward, but quite a feat to be able to be standing here today to get the GMP approved. Want to talk a little bit about where we're at?
Yes. So when I joined the district in February of this year, it was right when design development was approved and the budget was approved, we were in budget. We weren't in budget by a lot, but we were in budget. But that's very early in design and so as the architects continue to refine the plans, you've really got to be paying attention and constantly working on controlling the cost. So that's what we did. In March, we had a big team meeting with O'Connell Robertson, all their consultants, you know, their structural consultants, their civil consultants, their MEP consultants. Everybody was in the room with Rogers O'Brien and also Core at a separate session, but, and we looked at, we went through- and we looked at, we went through sheet by sheet, if you will. It wasn't really digital, but, you know, theoretically, it was sheet by sheet. And we looked at the disciplines, and we looked at what do we have, you know, what can we reduce the cost on but still deliver quality, still deliver the program? And we did that in March. We continued to do it throughout both of the projects, especially Waco High School. After we got GMP one in and, and you approved that in June, all of us, Rogers O'Brien, O'Connell Robertson, and Waco ISD, kept working on bringing the price down, identifying cost reduction items, looking for things that we could streamline. So we were really pushing to bring that GMP in, hopefully in budget, when it was bid July 14th. But it didn't happen. So we're sitting there in the room, Rogers O'Brien and Waco ISD and O'Connell Robertson, and we're looking at each other and going, well, we got a goal to be on time and in budget, and we didn't hit it. So we've got to really look at this hard and figure out what we've got to do, because we know we're not compromising program, and we know we're not compromising schedule or, or quality. What are we going to do? So we looked at the building, and we're going to go into some specifics, and Jared will show you those, for some modifications we can make that do not substantially change anything about the building that the students or the staff would experience. It's still going to be everything they would expect, but, but we just made some changes that make it cost less. Another big thing we did, which, which was making the building one phase, because in the prior GMP, the prior effort, we had multiple phases with the goal of using as much of the existing building as possible. But we were really asking people, then asking the trade partners, the subcontractors, to price something that they weren't going to do for two years. And we were really worried that they might try to cover themselves, because who knows what's going to happen in two years, right? And you can't really blame them. And so we felt that if we could convert this to a single phase, that we could streamline that and get the confidence of the partners up to where we would be able to bring the project in on budget. We worked hand in hand, Rogers O'Brien, and I want to just give them some recognition for being here tonight. Cisco Hobbs, who's the president of the company, is here. Cisco, if you'd stand up. And Braylon Biford, who's a project manager, a senior project manager, and then Jonathan Egling, who's a senior project manager. Jonathan, I want you to get a good look at him, because he's the project, senior project manager on the job, and he doesn't have any gray hair right now. So we'll see in three years what he looks like. So it took a lot to get to this point. It took creative thinking. It took compromising some things. You know, we had to give up the Performing Arts Center, and we've been working with Larry Carpenter and with the campus to find a way to accommodate that program during this time. And, but, but the things we're getting is the building all at one time. So that's a plus, and our students won't have to hike from basically 44th Street all the way up in a covered walkway surrounded by plywood in a tunnel to get them from one part of the school to the other. So there's a lot of good things that have come out of it, big one being that we're in budget, and that, that protects this project, and it protects all the other projects in this bond that we'll deliver for the community. So, all right, Jared, tell them a little bit more about these planned modifications.
So what you'll see here on the screen is GMP one, which was previously approved, and then GMP two tonight is $109 million. So that brings us to the $140,500,000, which is within the project's budget. So that's our goal, and then we have the path to budget. And so what I have here on the screen in front of you is the original site and floor plan concept as we've worked through the design. So you have New Road, on the left side is the site plan, New Road across the top, Coal Court across the right, 44th Street, and then Trice. So that is the, I'll call it the finished product, what it would look like at the end of the day. And then we have the floor plan off to the right. As Gloria indicated, we are working through a path to budget. So this is the updated site plan and floor plan that you see here between the two. And there's four major things that we went through and did as part of this process. One of them is the single-phase shift. So what you see, and you can probably see it mostly in the floor plan, is the area in green and the area in, I'll call it light blue, maybe teal. That is the CTE and the athletics wings. Those have shifted 135 feet to the west. We are still maintaining the same orientation and access from internal to the school, but what that does is it moves it off of the existing Waco High School building, with the exception of the existing auditorium. So that is the main key driver that allowed us to build it within a single phase there. So we still end up with a, a great building. We reorientated with that the location of the band practice field and the parking, the student parking, to better orientate to how the building would actually situate in that scenario. Paired with that, we will be central, or moving the Cup, which is the central utility plant. It was originally located directly against Trice, and it will move directly adjacent to the building next to the weight room area. That allowed us to make sure that we minimize the amount of piping between the two facilities, take some efficiencies within the mechanical design to be able to do that and be able to move that forward. The third change that we're doing is we're doing a plan modification to the A, ABC is what we called it. Architecturally, we divide the building into areas, and we label them by ABC. I think we're through Q on the building, and those relate to plan sheets. They're just the first three there at the top. And so what we did is look at the orientation of that and ultimately create a configuration that reduces the amount of exterior skin on the building by around 20,000 square feet. So basically, we're reducing the amount of exterior wall. We maintain the same number of classrooms, the same cloud of learning environment, the same size of spaces. It's just in a different wrapper on the outside. So it was a huge win from that side. And then the last is, again, value management or value engineering. So that's where we went in and looked at individual products and systems to find equivalence. That's where we really are able to engage input from the subcontractors, from the contractor, from ourselves, to make sure that we're providing that same level of quality. There's a list of probably 100 items in this round that we went through and evaluated and are integrating into the plans. So this really does become that path to the budget, to bring us from bid day price to the total GMPs of 140,500,000, ultimately to create success. As Gloria indicated, with that, there is a, the opportunity to shift schedule and ultimately work it a little bit different way, but we end up at the same place, is that construction activities have started. If you haven't been there, there's been a lot going on with foundation prep that is part of GMP one. So that will start what we're calling now Phase One and Phase Two, which is the site, basically north of the existing building and the entirety of Waco High, the new Waco High School campus. The goals to, they will have started that already. The goal is to have that completed April 18th of 2025, turn over the keys to the new building, be able to move in over the summer, get everything set. So when school starts that August, you have roughly about three months to get everything prepped and started from that standpoint. That will then kick off Phase Three, which is demolition of the existing Waco High School campus, finishing out the site and the athletic fields where the existing building sits, and that's still at the substantial completion date of December 15th. So it's what the original contract said. We're still hitting the same date. We're able to turn it over in the same phase and ultimately still have school on, on the same day as we originally planned in budget, which is a, a pretty huge feat and very excited about it and the opportunity of what we sit here tonight.
That's great. I will entertain a motion to approve guaranteed maximum price number two for Waco High School and plan modifications outlined in construction, construction and just proposal package as presented. I'll entertain a motion.
I do have a question for you, Jared. You said thinner walls, is that what you said? You're gonna, they are thinner skin. How'd you frame it?
Reduce skin, meaning square footage, meaning like instead of building 100 square feet of wall, we're now building 80 square feet of wall.
Okay, I was.
It's a volume and a x.
I see, okay.
If we get a motion in a second, we can still discuss, so there's still an option to discuss. But I will entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve it.
Okay, Ms. Ayazidi.
Second.
Mr. Grant. Great, we've got a first and a second, and now, is there any further discussion? Yes, please, Ms. Ayazidi.
Can you tell us the number one more time of how much the shift was?
135 feet. Yes.
But in the scope of a building, doesn't feel that long, that far?
Correct, correct. So I mean, it's 30 yards on a football field, 40 yards on a football field. So we often talk about travel time, so it's seconds in terms of the overall distance. But really, the goal, when we looked at and thought about it, you know, we think about, okay, this is a shift that works from a construction standpoint. We always put the lens back on, does it work from an educational standpoint, an everyday standpoint? And it does. So we're keeping it underneath the, the building. We have the same relationship, for example, with the gym to the main corridor, ultimately trying to make sure that we've got the same great building at the end of the day for Waco ISD. Opens up some opportunities as well for future additions. We like that as well. So there are some benefits there.
Any other questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Grant.
Let me just say, as somebody who's worked in construction a lot, this is remarkable. It is very easy. It's very convenient to say that's just what the market is. Prices are going up, and you got to deal with it. But this is about stewardship, stewardship of the bond that we've promised will be coming in a certain number. And so I appreciate your leadership and determination and resiliency to get us into a place that still works, and we can say that we met what we promised. You won't find, it is a rare thing to find that in the market right now. Normally, it just goes over bid, and you just deal with it and find a way to pay for it, and, and I'm thankful we don't have to make that claim. I do have one practical question, because I live around the corner. On the New Road side, the base buildup right now is about 18 feet above street level, maybe? It's almost at the height of the power lines? Will there just be a massive retaining wall along that side? Or will that be graded down as other stuff gets poured?
It is something that we've looked at. So part of the design, and I'll just point back to the plan, so the classroom wing, this is what we've been calling the upper floor plan, because the classroom wing actually steps down. So as it gets to that segment, it'll take up that, and that was, I'll say, a cost-saving strategy in terms of not having to build up the base on that side. But in the goal to have everything generally accessible on one plane and minimize the number of elevators, because those stairs within the building, that did increase the height, in particular at the performing and fine arts area, so that will slope down to grade, and we will have some vegetation in there to help create, break that a little bit.
Are there any other further comments or questions? Okay, I will enter, we've got a motion and a second, so I will call a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I just want to say, Ms. Barretta, Jared, Doug, I mean, just Core, thank you. I know that, Rogers O'Brien, I'm so sorry. Thank you so much. I know that that is, keeping things within budget, just as Trustee Grant said, is not easy, and I really do appreciate the time, the intentionality that you guys have done to keep it in budget with the same quality. So thank you. Okay, moving on to item nine, consider discuss, take appropriate action regarding 2022, 2023 district and campus improvement plan. Dr. Kincanon.
Okay, so each year, we ask you all to approve the district improvement plan and campus improvement plans as required by policy. We included the district improvement plan in the packet and gave you a link for all of the campus improvement plans, so you could review those, any of those that you wanted to review. So what I'd like to do is, it's a 74-page document for the district improvement plan, but I'd like to hit some highlights, and I'm really incredibly proud of our team for the work that they did in planning this year. This is something that we work on all summer, and then we refine, and we, we, our campuses do the same, and we proof all of theirs in preparation for bringing this to you. So I'd like to go over a few things with you and see what questions you have. First of all, if you'll go to that table of contents, it's page three of the plan, I think that would be 679 in your packet, hopefully. Is that correct? Okay, that's correct. So there are the 10 goals that the board adopted, and the plan is based on those 10 goals. And so underneath each of those 10 goals are performance objectives, and under those performance objectives are strategies to achieve, achieve those objectives. And so I'm going to just go very quickly. I'll give you the page number and talk through some highlights, but we can talk about anything that you want to talk about. Goal one is related to engaging families in the community, and the thing that I want to point out there on page 680 is that Strategy One, which is the big thing that Alice's department will be doing this year, which is to engage our community, our staff, students, parents, community in a strategic communications planning process that will result in a communication plan. And what we're looking to do is to get feedback from parents in the community on the ways in which they would like us to communicate with them so that we can focus our communications in a way that we meet their needs. And so she'll be beginning that process in October, and that's a big thing that is happening. Also want to point out Strategy Three, because we've had this in the works and we haven't accomplished it yet, but I have help, and we will get going on this very soon, and that's the advisory, Student Advisory Committee. And I know that's important to the board, and some of you have asked about that. So I want to keep that in the plan, and we want to do that. Next thing I want to point out is on page 686, and so you'll hear, and this is going to go right into Goal Two, which is retain, develop and retain highly qualified teachers and staff. And you're going to hear me say we're expanding programs or strengthening work that we're already start, that we've already started. And so for the first strategy there, we have expand the opportunity culture teacher residency model that we started last year. It was highly successful. We started with 49 classrooms in the district. This year, we have expanded that to 90 classrooms. And so what that is, is a, we have a multi-classroom leader, a teacher, who takes on additional responsibilities, who's given a stipend, and she works with a student teacher who is paid, and with a paraprofessional who receives additional, an additional stipend for serving in this program. And they work as a team to take care of the teacher's classroom, and then the teacher is then able to mentor her grade-level team and/or subject area. And so it's a capacity-building model that we saw some great results with on our campuses last year. Strategy Two is that LPC counselor that we've been talking about. Strategy Three, just a reminder that we have a retention bonus for our teachers and hard-to-fill positions, which were custodians and cafeteria workers. So we'll be paying out our bonuses with Christmas paychecks, and that's a really big deal for our teachers who returned this year. And that was a $10,000 bonus paid out in three payments for continuing to come back to Waco ISD. And then Strategy Four is expansion of the teacher incentive allotment program, which is really complicated, by the way. So I'm really grateful for Amy Hosek and Dr. Gutierrez for their work on that. As you know, we, we paid out some really nice TIA bonuses this last year, and we are preparing to do so again. In fact, they're in the process of reviewing those now. Moving along, page 688, still under Goal Two, but this is an objective about professional development. And so we're, Strategy One there is continuing our elementary literacy plan. We're in year three. We're promoting the Teacher Leadership Academy that I told you about before. We're continuing with data-driven instruction in that process, which our teachers are really getting down, but we have some new leaders that we're training and continuing that. And then on the next page there, I would mention Strategy Four, which is action coaching, again, continuing that model, but bringing new people along and continuing to go deeper with that. On page 69. On page six ninety-two is a new goal, goal three, around our curriculum and instruction. And this is, of course, at the heart of what we do. And so that first strategy there is to implement new scope and sequence curriculum documents. So we've been working on documents every year, started during the pandemic and developing our own scope and sequence documents. And you'll see all of the new curriculums that were added for this year in strategy one. And then in strategy two, those will be the curriculums that we'll be adding for next school year. So that will be work that we do in the summer in preparation for next year. And then strategy three is continuing to bring in our teachers to provide feedback and revise those documents because they're the users of them and we want them to tell us what's working and what's not. Page six ninety-five, this whole section is, you have a question? Is there a question? Okay, sorry. Not yet, okay. Am I off on my page numbers? Are we okay? We're good, okay. Page six ninety-five, still under goal three. This particular section is about the district's literacy program. And so strategy one there is reading recovery and that is a program that we're expanding this year. So as you know, we used Esser Funding to send some teacher leaders to Texas Women's University to be trained in reading recovery. And they, they had a great year of learning and working with their students, but this year, they are training a teacher at every elementary campus to become a reading recovery teacher and serving our first grade students. So they're learning. They have a lot of training planned and they're learning and we've expanded, so there's that word expanded again, and going deeper with the work. Strategy two is beginning our work for effective literacy instruction for high school. And that is new this year, so we're bringing that work up to the high school level. Strategy three is continuation of our literacy plan for middle school. And then strategy four is, we already mentioned, our year three for our elementary professional development for literacy. And then on the next page, page six ninety-seven, we are working to improve mathematics. So you know, in the scores across the state, mathematics was an area that dropped during the pandemic. So we're working to develop a framework for elementary and math instruction. And I know we've had some professional development around that already, but that's an area we want to continue to focus on. Okay, next thing I want to highlight is on page seven hundred and five. And that's CCMR. And just wanted to mention that that has, we have a whole section for that. I know our curriculum and instruction team is continuing to plan for this, for this work and that was important to our ratings. So I don't have anything in particular I want to highlight there, but I want you to know that's important and it's in the plan. Goal five, page seven hundred and seven. Another extension is, there is around our graduation rate. And this goal, goal five is around using all of our resources and our programs and pulling those together. So we have a special ed program, we have a Title I program, we have comp ed funds, dyslexia, multiple programs across the district, and we don't want them to get in silos. So this is about working to pull everything together to improve academic achievement and our graduation rate. So performance objective one is around the graduation rate and the first item there is about extending the optional flexible school program, school day program to Brazos High School. And so we have that rolling now at Waco High School, University High School, and also at Brazos High School. And that has made a difference for our students. We saw many of our students who wanted to go to work during the pandemic and we have another option to make sure that they get their education. And we're proud of that. That too was funded by Esser Funding, by the way. Okay, page seven hundred and thirteen, this section also in goal five, another special program, the bilingual ESL program. I wanted to mention here that we, another expansion of the work that we started last year. Last year, we piloted a one-way dual language program at Dean Highland. And this year, we've expanded it and you can see all the campuses there, Alta Vista, Crestview, Provident Heights, Bills Hill, Cedar Ridge, Kendrick, and Lamb. And that is to take care of our emergent bilinguals. And that's really important work that Grace Benson has been doing. And we've been asked to, to help other districts in that regard and really have been a model in this area for the implementation of dual language. All right, am I going too fast? All right, page seven twenty-one is still under goal five. This one has to do with CTE. And again, want to highlight our Future Educators Academy, which is our program to develop teachers. And then we've also got a plan for our Future Heroes Academy, which is to develop firefighters. And so that's outlined in this program. And we actually had an advisory committee meeting today over at South Waco Elementary and met with some of our future educators, our students. And this was really exciting to see the kids and the teachers. The teachers over there are really excited about what we're doing to grow, grow teachers. So really, really fun. Page seven hundred and twenty-three is Advanced Academics, another special program. And I wanted to highlight the springboard curriculum, which is a rigorous program that we're implementing this year for the first time in the Atlas Program. And actually, I believe we've also added that to all of our pre-AP courses at all of our middle schools, but a really good program to increase rigor that we're proud to offer to our students. On page seven hundred and twenty-seven, moving to goal six, sustain safe and supportive learning environments. Objective one is about the district's commitment to racial equity. And that strategy one there is that equity assessment. And I want to thank you all for participating in the overview session that was held. We got most of you in there. So appreciate that. Dr. Warren is working, is leading that work and we're thankful for her for that. Performance objective two is strategies to support the safety and well-being of students. I have a number of items, actually, that whole page to point out to you there, meeting the requirements of the state with the EOPs and making sure we're doing what we need to do there. Strategy two, Suzanne Hamilton and Dr. Warren have asked about an emergency software system that we will purchase that will allow us to document drills, intruder assessments, threat assessment, and our reunification process. So that's a, that's a really good thing that we want to get accomplished this year. And then back to retention bonuses, you all just recently added those retention bonuses for our school resource officers. Thank you for that because we want to retain them. And then there's that, submit a grant to the Texas Education Agency for additional equipment under strategy four. Strategy five is really making sure that we're using the Stop It anonymous reporting system for our students. And I will tell you that our use of Stop It has increased. We talked about that as an administrative team, making sure that we communicated that to our students and families. And we have seen those, those reports are coming in and they're, they're providing us with valuable information and things that we can do to help our kids. Page seven hundred and thirty-one is, was mentioned earlier about social emotional learning strategies for our students. We rolled out a new social emotional learning curriculum this year. And most of our campuses are early adopters. We did give them the choice to adopt it this year or next year. Most of them are doing it this year. And it's, our program is called Character Strong and it's, you may have seen some of the work on social media that our campuses are doing with students. Objective four, page seven hundred and thirty-two, is about behavior interventions. We did some work this summer to conduct five-day, a five-day boot camp for new teachers. We recognize that we have a lot of new teachers and they need a lot of support. And so we had a goal to get them in and really work with them this summer. We had, I think, about seventy-five teachers that came in early and spent a whole week with us. And then we had a behavior academy for our principals and their leadership teams so that they could proactively plan for behavior management for this year. I'm looking at Mr. McAdoo, he, yes, he participated in that. And then, and then that strategy three is something you already know about as well and that's funding the teachers who wanted to go to Texas Tech University with Esser Funding to get a master's degree in applied behavioral analysis so that we could grow some expertise in that area within the district. We had four teachers who have signed up for that and are studying already. So we have, we're building four experts there. On page seven hundred and thirty-five, we have student attendance. As you know, that's a huge priority for us this year. And Dr. Ricky Edens is leaving, leading that work for us. We appreciate him taking on that responsibility and all of our campuses for their focus on attendance. We're doing better this year. We're still, we're still struggling at the high school level more than I want to, but we, we are doing much better overall. So we're going to stay on it all year and try to get our students to come to school regularly. Page seven hundred and thirty-nine is build capacity for school leadership. I mentioned that in the superintendent's report. That's the work that we're doing with Holdsworth and leadership training and our academies that I mentioned. I'm almost done. Page seven forty-three, I wanted to mention technology. Technology's in pretty good, I mean, really good shape, right? And that was because of the, the funding that we've received as a result of COVID and the pandemic. And so we, we're still working on it, but we're in far better shape than we used to be. And then finally, page seven hundred and forty-seven, implementing our long-range facilities master plan. We'll be accepting bids for Tennyson soon, October. October, we were looking to break ground on Tennyson in January. So we should have a budget to you by the end of the year for Tennyson. Of course, we'll be providing oversight, Gloria will, for all of our, our projects. You have approved the GMP for Waco High School. And the new thing is strategy four, working with our architects to plan and design the new Kendrick Elementary and also renovations at South Waco Elementary. We, we actually kicked off with our project executive committee yesterday, talking about some goals with, with our principals and other leaders around the table at the executive level. And then we're planning for our user groups with our teachers. We are planning to take some tours of elementary schools and I would love to have three board members to go with us on October seventeenth. So if you are interested in touring some elementary schools between here and Austin, I think most of them were further south in the Austin area, I would love to have you. So please let me know. Is, is there anyone right now who knows they're available? Seventeenth of October. Okay, Jonathan? Anyone else? Check your calendars. Yeah, you could, you could text or call and let us know. But October seventeenth is the plan, a full day planned. And then we'll be taking a tour of Midway's new elementary school on October the thirteenth at four PM. And I could take three of you with me to that as well. So if you'll just let me know if you'd like to see that. And then, I'm sorry, I thought I was done, but I'm not. Finally, on page seven hundred and fifty, we are, Gloria has been working very diligently to improve processes and procedures for transportation, including the use of our software, routing software and other things that we need to improve upon. And so I'm grateful for her for that and just wanted to mention it to you. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have this evening. That's the twenty-two, twenty-three district improvement plan. Campus improvement plans will reflect pretty much most of that work. However, they'll have their own flavor of things that they're also working on individually at their campuses.
I wanted to thank you and your team for your work on this. I love goal setting and I love the logistical work of what we need to do to accomplish those goals. And I think for families with students in the district, it is so easy for us to get lost in the mundane of getting the lunch and doing the homework and every day getting kids to school. And it's easy to lose sight of the larger progress this district is making. And so getting to go through these goals was really energizing for me to be able to see those steps forward that we're making, whether it's the things that can seem smaller, like expanding the Stop It app, or I liked looking at the CARE-SOLIS for case management that has been expanded. But then also so many of the strategies that have been built out and added depth since the last school year that really we have added capacity of the work that's being done. I looked specifically at the expanded strategies for the behavior intervention programs and then so much expanded work on building capacity for leadership. And I am very grateful for the work that this whole team, your leadership team, is doing right now to help set Waco ISD up to be stronger in the future. The way that you are investing in our teachers to help prepare them to be leaders and investing in our students to prepare them to be leaders too is so valuable. And I love the opportunity to take today to mark the progress that we are making as a district. And I think that's why these goals are so important.
Does anyone else have a comment?
I have a question.
Yes.
On goal three, refining scope and sequence documents and goal two, supporting teacher recruitment and retaining teachers, are we getting teacher input, classroom teacher input?
On curriculum documents?
Correct.
Absolutely. So we had teacher teams in the summer who worked on those documents and we'll have them back every summer to refine their, their documents. And so in, this is pretty normal to have lots of things that you want to change initially and it'll get, will get less and less as we go. When we did the initial work in 2020, it was hard to get teachers here because of the pandemic and COVID. But we had more teacher involvement this past summer and we will continue to do so. So thank you for that question.
I have a question.
Yes.
My question is more of where, what are the measures for the outcomes? Like, how do we know how these strategic plans, how are we doing? So I think it's very thought out, but where, where will we get the outcomes? How often? And what would that look like?
Yep. So if you look at the plan, every plan has an evaluation data source listed at the top. And so, you know, I'm looking, right now, I'm on page seven oh five and I see CCMR. And so, you know, we, we look at all kinds of measures for CCMR from TSI to ACT SAT scores, advancement, advanced placement scores, military enlistment data. And so every single section has the data that we will review to see if we're meeting that target. And I could bring you any data that you want in any of those areas. And we do look at some of that, but it's extensive. And so every section has that.
And when, when would that be presented to the board? I think that's, because I've seen the data sources, I was just wondering, how often do we review those? Or how often, I guess, does the administration review those to see if our strategies are producing the outcomes that we're looking for?
Thank you. We have a schedule in our leadership team meeting every week. We're looking at data. So we are talking about what is the most important data that we ought to be looking at and we're reviewing that together. There's a ton of data. So we- So we, you know, we could spend every day looking at data. And so we're trying to find our hot spots in, in reviewing those. So CCMR is big right now, we'll be studying that extensively. We've been looking at attendance data every week. And so it's really an ongoing process.
Is it possible for the board to get like a summary, even if it's just a one pager of what those updates are in the weekly meeting? So we could know kind of how our strategies are working out to meet our goals?
So, yes, although I would say that, that is my job, right? To look at that data with my team every week. But if there, if, you know, if you want to see what we're looking at, I'm happy to share it. But it's, it's my responsibility to review that with my team every week. And of course, those are decisions that we're making as a team. So it's not, you know, it may not match what you're wanting to look at, if that makes sense.
I don't think it's specific things I wanted to see. I think it just could be good for the board to have an awareness of what's going on and kind of how we're moving towards reaching our goals.
Any other questions? Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the district improvement plan and campus improvement plans as presented.
Approve the district improvement plan and campus improvement plans as presented.
Thank you, Trustee Vedania. Do I have a second?
Take it.
Thank you, Trustee Davis. Is there any further discussion? Comments? Okay. I'll entertain a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Kinkanen. Appreciate it. Okay, we are going to item number 10, review discuss comparative accountability data. Ms. Bell.
I have to apologize ahead of time. I, I promise, my doctor has given me every test known to man. This is purely an allergies cough. So I've eaten a ton of cough drops to kind of keep my coughing down, but I may have to pause every once in a while and I may talk a little softer than usual. But our last time together, you asked me to compile comparative data from other districts. And for a data girl, this was kind of a fun trip through the entire state of Texas. So I've learned that Waco ISD is extremely unique in our district makeup. And I kept going back and forth with Dr. Kinkanen for comparative measures. So there's no real straightforward comparisons to Waco ISD and the entire state of Texas in terms of our size, in terms of our economically disadvantaged students, or our ethnicity distribution. So we are very unique. And so I tried to give you comparisons from many different angles. So before I begin though, I'd like to say, and I know you'd agree with me, since I'm talking about other districts, that Waco ISD respects and commends the work of all the districts that I'm about to share with. But you asked me to compare, so I'm going to have to talk about them a little bit. This is coming from the site, the txschools.gov site. So all the things I'm, I'm sharing with you are public and I literally copied from the pages of the public release of all of this data to try to do that comparison. But I want to remind you that other districts' ratings have nothing to do with us. This is not a comparative system. There's not a winner and a loser. It's not a race. TEA's quote on this is that ratings are based on defined criteria, not a fixed distribution. So there could theoretically in the state of Texas, everyone can be an A because the targets are set pretty clearly, although the targets will be reset pretty clearly this coming year. So the rating of one district does not have any effect on another district. So the first perspective I took was a geographic one. The performance of economically disadvantaged students has been found to have an impact on star performance even before COVID. So much so that the commissioner included a measure in accountability called relative performance. He even acknowledged that ECO dis percent does affect if two districts are the same size, but one has 10% ECO dis and one has 80. There is a difference in the students' needs and in the students' performance that's inequitable. So there is some give. So what I did was look at us geographically and I tried to use two different criteria, but the first one was economic disadvantaged percentage. But of course, if you've ever dealt with data before and somebody before said data every day, and I got very excited talking about that. But ECO dis percent is relative to size. So these are in descending order, but you'll see that Colleen has the longest bar because that's enrollment. Those numbers represent the enrollment numbers, how many students are in their district. But the blue part of the bar represents the percent of ECO dis students within that district. So this is our first perspective geographically to understand that, yes, we do have comparable districts for ECO dis percentage such as La Vega, Connolly and Marlin. However, their size is quite different. So for Marlin, 95% of 877 students is quite a different way of looking at it than the 91% for Waco for our 14,000 children. Okay? Just in case you wanted to know, I also looked up Dallas, Houston and San Antonio. So Dallas is at 85%. Houston is at 78% ECO dis and San Antonio is at 87. So in that way, again, we're truly unique in size and ECO dis percent. How are calculations made? This, the snip comes from, I'm going to remind you of the accountability system and how we get the ratings. So a reminder, there are three domains. There is domain one, which is student achievement. And you can see on Waco ISDs, that's the 66 overall, and that was a not rated House, Senate bill of 1365. The 32 is our percent of approaches or better, meets or better, and masters of all star tests, all subjects, all versions. So this does include our star alt twos and students as well. So you'll see, this is an average of an average. So it's pretty strange math, but it is 56% scored approaches or better, 28% scored meets or better, and 11% scored masters divided by three is our 32, which then scales into the numbers in the right column. So that's scaled to a 57. So the scaling is like curved grades. So it puts us sort of on a path and sees where we rate in that particular piece. You can see our CCMR was 47% and that was scaled to a 76. Graduation rate, 88.7 was to a 65. And then, school progress is the best of part, two A or two B. Academic growth is two A. Relative performance, which I explained for the ECO dis, is two B. So the difference between the, the student achievement is it's flat out, what is our number for achievement? But relative performance is what is our achievement compared to other districts with the same economically disadvantaged students? It puts us on a graph and tells us how we're doing. So you can see that was a 76. So relative to other districts, we were performing stronger. And then finally, closing the gaps is domain three, which is all the sub pops. All of this data broken into sub pops with over 20 different targets for us to be aiming at at all times. Academic growth, we had 7,132.5 points scored by our students. That means 7,132 tests showed a year or more of growth by TEA's definition. And that was divided by our 10,287 students for a 69% average. So this is our math and reading from fourth grade all the way to English II and Algebra I. So that 7,132, I think, kind of puts it in perspective for how many students showed growth for those grade levels. Okay? The next few slides are going to use this graphic here with these numbers and compare them to the geographic neighbors that I just had on the last slide. So Waco ISD at a 91% economically disadvantaged, Marlin ISD at a 95% economically disadvantaged. Again, our number, keep in mind, our number, I won't repeat it each time, is 14,399 students. But Marlin's is 877 for the entire district. Their domain one was an 80. You can see that the 56 for star was comparable with ours, but their CCMR and graduation rate were higher and their academic growth was about the same. And then relative performance also puts them on that same graph with us for percent. And then closing the gaps, they had a 73. Waco ISD compared to La Vega, again, for us, 14,399. By the time I was done, I memorized that number. Theirs was 3,068 students. For domain one, they had an 82. For domain two, they had a 90. For domain three, they had an 81. I'll also remind you that La Vega has an official early college high school, so that does affect their CCMR percentage a little more than ours. Connolly ISD, 80% economically disadvantaged with 2,341 students. And their domain one was a 76. School progress was an 89. And then closing the gaps is a 71. Sorry about that. But you can see that they leaned into some different measures than we did for their domain two. It wasn't academic growth, it was relative performance for them that was changing. So that kind of helps us to lean out of the narrative that there was nowhere but up for our students to go. So that's why everybody got growth. I've heard that from a lot of people, but we didn't just get growth in our low performing students, we got growth in our high performing as well. But this system allows districts to sort of go with their strengths. Temple ISD is 75% economically disadvantaged. They have 8,360 students. Their domain one was a 70. Their domain two was an 80. Their domain three was a 70 as well. McGregor ISD, 64% ECO dis with 1,478 students. They had an 81 in domain one, an 89 in domain two, and a 77 in domain three. Colleen ISD, so largest enrollment in this group, 43,802 students with a 55% economically disadvantaged. They had a 76 in domain one, an 80 in domain two, and a 74 in domain three. Excuse me. Robinson ISD with a 36% economically disadvantaged, 2,401 students. They had a 93 and 91 and an 84 for theirs. Midway ISD, 8,233 students with a 33% economically disadvantaged population, 94 domain one, 92 domain two, and a 100 in closing the gaps. Lorena ISD, 25% economically disadvantaged with a student population of 1,764 students, 96 for domain one, 93 for domain two, and closing the gaps, a 100. So I want to remind you about closing the gaps. It's about hitting targets. And some of these districts have far less targets than we do because there's a minimum group size. So you have to have, thank you, you have to have 25 or more students in a group for the state to evaluate it. And so for us in Waco ISD, we embrace all 23 groups. But there are some districts here that are not held accountable for as many targets as we are. So domain three is really hard to compare because it depends on how many students you have in each particular group. Any questions before I move on to this one? That was my pause for water. Teacher pause, right? Any questions? So then I looked inside region 12, keeping it still to a geographical boundary. So continuing with the geography comparison, even within our region, there are only nine districts in the category with us of high poverty districts. High poverty is defined by TEA as anything above 80% is high poverty. So those five districts are Marlin, La Vega and Connolly, which you saw in the presentation, but also Mahia and Walnut Spring. It's all like Walnut Spring thrown in there. Okay? Out of, if you look, there's a total of nine high poverty districts, but region 12 has a total of 81 districts overall. Yes, yes. Okay. And then, on the TX schools site, there is a button that says compare. So when you plug in a school and you look, it's very clear at the top, it says compare. And you can pull up two schools and it creates this graph for you. And you have all kinds of buttons you can push. So this was a lot of fun for this data person to cut back on how many data buttons I was pushing. But on the main screen, you put there, so I went with the criteria of our testing, since that was the main question, was about our star testing. The approaches or above, meets or above, masters, and then growth, the percent of growth, the raw data. So this is not scaled. And then at the bottom, I pulled the demographic information so you could get perspective. So for example, if we look at Connolly Elementary and Parkdale Elementary, so I chose these two for geography. But the first difference that you can notice is that the total enrollment for Connolly Elementary is 356 students, while Parkdale has 620. But Connolly Elementary only has fourth and fifth grade students. So that kind of makes them, that 620 for Parkdale includes pre-K through five. So it does make them comparable. 82%, 82.9 for Connolly, but 93 for Parkdale. You'll see that we have a higher population of African American and Hispanic students at Parkdale and Connolly has a higher percent of white students. So you can see going across their overall rating, the percentage in performance, and then academic growth at 82%. So when you look at middle school or elementary data versus high school data, it's a completely different set of data that includes other pieces. So I gave you two snips of what this looks like. At the top, the student achievement calculation for a middle school, this is Tennyson Middle Schools number, but you would see that for any of the elementary or middle schools. It is purely star performance. It's all tests for elementary and middle. And that star performance was a 70. But over on the right at the bottom, the high school has star performance, their end of course exams, plus their CCMR, plus the graduation rate. And so you can see over on the side that it's a 40, 40, 20. So what the graduates do in the fourth year is 60% of the high school's accountability. And the 40% is predominantly freshman performance. And if you've been at high school, three of those EOCs are the freshmen. So the retesters are included again and again inside this data. And Ms. Parnell's here, she can talk a little bit about the remediation when we get to the end. But that creates some logistical concerns for the high school. Comparing elementaries within Waco ISD using the same tool, you can see, I have to tell you, the, the TEA creates what's called distinction designation groups for campuses. It's 40 campuses. So they look across the entire state and they're looking for the, the size, the grade distribution, the ethnicity distribution, the percent of sped, the percent of emergent bilingual, the percent of early college high school inside your school. So it's, it's a lot of fine tuned factors. And in Waco ISD, none of our campuses are in a comparison group with more than two other Waco ISD schools. So that in and of itself shows us that even our unique campuses, they are their first competition. I don't even want them, even during your comparison group, they, in data meetings I've had with them, they realized that those campuses are also unique in and of themselves. So even if you're in the same group, it might not be exactly the same size, or it might not be exactly the same demographics or, and because we know our Waco students, it might not even be the same community concerns inside those schools because you're just looking at them from a numbers perspective. So most of our elementaries do not have any other Waco ISD school in their list of 40. And I think that's important because that again shows how truly unique we are. Now, our two high schools are in the same group of 40. And the middle schools, it's two and two. So Tennyson and Chavez are in a comparison group and Indian Springs and Carver are, which is interesting to me. So when I looked inside, Cedar Ridge and Kendrick are in the same comparison group. So I felt like this is another way we can look. And so the overall rating is the same. And you can see the performance is pretty comparable for the two. At the top, the approaches meets masters and growth. And then total enrollment is pretty similar with an economically disadvantaged. But we can see there's some difference in the balance of the percent of African American students and Hispanic students. But this gives us a good comparison. But again, Cedar Ridge and Kendrick are in the same group with no other Waco ISD schools. So that, that makes it a challenge for us at the district level viewing data. But you can compare us to places across the state. So I pulled one of the elementaries off of Providence Heights comparison group. And you could see, I, the, on the left was And you could see, on the left was the fun buffet of data for this person, you know, going through all the things that we could look at. And so you'd be able to do the same thing. But overall, Providence Heights with Wainwright Elementary, the approaches meets masters and academic growth. You can see the total enrollment is similar, the ecodis is similar, but the special education is dissimilar. Wainwright has 16% special education, whereas Providence Heights has 7%. So that can have an impact on their performance that we don't know because special education students are varied in their groups. And a percent of African American is different. The others are pretty comparable, within five points of each other. So geography and comparing enrollment and trying to compare and find schools. Another way I went at this for you was to compare 2019 to 2022, and including the state and the region in this. So the first one is reading. See, there's the state numbers for this past school year, the regional numbers for this past year, Waco ISD's numbers for this past year, and then Waco ISD's numbers in 2019 before COVID hit. Because I think I've told you before, when I work with the campuses, I tell them their first goal is to get back to where they were pre-COVID because every single one of our campuses experienced the COVID impact differently. I will say that 2019 state is not on there, but the state has not caught up with, has caught up with themselves, but has not exceeded themselves in reading. So in 2019, they were at 75, 48, and 21 for their approaches meets and masters. So they too have got some gains to make. Math is going to take us a little longer to make the gains because of the gaps in curriculum, right? So students who are virtual, the math instruction is a little bit different than the reading instruction, and it's a little more challenging. My kid is in pre-Cal right now. There is no way I can help him with his homework. And so for parents, sometimes that math and the way things are done is challenging. But reading I can do. I can do all the way down to pre-Cal, I can work with my child, I can ask them questions, I can read with them. So sometimes that bounce back comes a little faster because we can pull in the parents for help. So for math, you can see that we had the drop. We're not quite back to where we were. So the state, the region, Waco ISD, these are bigger gaps for us from 2019 to 2022, but I'm pretty confident in the bounce back because we've had systemic remediation for math. Before systemic remediation for reading is just a standard across the board. But last year or the year before was when we put in systemic mathematical intervention so students are ready for algebra when they get to algebra. So that's going to take a little time for our students to get there. We were already in 2019 performing slightly below the state as it was. And again, the state has not gotten back to where they were in math. They are 10% behind in every category, approaches, meets, and masters from where they were in 2019. So even across the state, we're seeing that math is taking a little longer to bounce back. Science. Science has some larger gaps, but of course, the science test incorporates reading and math. So until those two things make their bounce back for students, it's going to be a little harder for our kids to bounce back in science. And then social studies. But I remind you for social studies that we had a, there's only two tests for social studies, eighth grade and the US history and of course exam. And we experienced our greatest participation issues with the US history exam because that was the juniors, this year seniors. So they need that test. They're also the class that got three tests waived when they were freshmen. So that's feeding a little bit into their belief that they don't have to worry about testing. But they were also the juniors, so economics was pulling them out of the building to go work or help support the family in a lot of cases. So we have plans in place to get them to test in December for social studies and for us to bounce back. So those numbers are a little skewed by the participation in both the eighth grade because of the attendance, but also in the US history, the junior class for social studies. And before I continue with the comparable districts, I have to tell you, next year, I don't know that I can be back here and compare year to year because TEA is changing all the tests. So this year, every single test will get a makeover, and the time limit will be removed. So students will have an entire day to take the test, which some of our students may very well use. And there is constructed response on all tests except for math. There's things like mix and match, highlight the right part of the test, matching columns, fill in the blanks, find the place on the number line because it is all online now. There's no more paper tests for students. So that is going to make it very difficult for us to compare, or the state. That's also going to cause a delay in us getting scores back at some point because TEA is going to have to redo the scoring after the kids take the test. So that's how, we'll have to wait for them to do that with all the state data before we will know how our students do. And again, it's not really apples to apples. It will be very different tests.
Can you remind us when that data will come in? From the 23 spring testing?
TEA estimates August or September. August is when the, all the scores will come in. Preliminary scores for all those tests. So we will not have them in May or June. We will not have estimates or preliminary. Usually we get the files. They can't score them until they put the whole state together and create the scales to score them. So our ratings will come in a couple of months later. So it's new tests, and then it is a new accountability system at the same time. But I got some ideas. So we got direction, but I'm going to try to keep on top of that for us. And so what did I learn? There are very few districts with both the economically disadvantaged percentage and demographics similar to Waco ISD, and the size of the 156 that had demographic data similar within that 5 to 10%. 68 of them have an enrollment of less than 1,000 students. And Ms. Parnell's going to talk about House Bill 4545. We have thousands of students who are in need of remediation, let alone having a building of 1,000 students. So again, I remind you, I got my notes here about the distinction groups. Tells us who the campuses really look like. And none of our campuses are in a group with more than two others. That was in elementary. So if we compare larger districts, we found two candidates who look similar to Waco ISD. After I toured the state of Texas on my computer, we have Spring ISD, which is fun because I'm a New Yorker, so I have no idea about these districts at all. So I was like learning a little bit. But Spring ISD is comparable to our demographic distribution at the bottom. Our ecodis, percent of African American, percent Hispanic is still a bit off than I would like. But the white percent, but the ecodis is in the neighborhood for it. But you can see the enrollment is not. You can see that our enrollment is half, less than half of what theirs is. So that would be a difference for the two of us. But the output was similar. 56 for ours, 61 for theirs, to 28, 32, and then the 11 to 13. So they scaled just a little bit higher than us in academic growth with 72% of their students growing. But that's 72% of 33,000, 33,000 students. And ours is the 69% that I talked about. So this was our first candidate. And then the second was Nacogdoches. I hope I'm saying that right. So they look similar to us. But again, at the bottom, you'll see total enrollment. This time, they're much smaller than we are, but their ecodis is similar to ours. Their African American percentage, the Hispanic percentage again is as off. And of course, the white percent is off as a differential there. But they came the closest to us in these areas. And so you can see that both of the schools had a C, and we had similar performance in, across the board. That might help you to understand that the ecodis percentage really does have an effect because the entire accountability system hinges on STAR testing. So that has an impact on our students not being able to demonstrate to the state the other ways that they may be successful. So pulling all data and comparative data, I want Ms. Parnell to come up and just talk to you for a minute about the 4545 comparison we made. So I got curious and pulled that data for us.
Good evening. So just to review what House Bill 4545 is. If you remember, in June of 2021, the legislator passed that any student who did not demonstrate proficiency had to have 30 hours of what's called accelerated instruction for grades three through eight at end of course in any subject area. So when we look at Waco ISD, based on our 2021 performance, we have 9,125 tests or students. But a student could have failed multiple tests who need the 30 hours of accelerated instruction. So what do we do? So what, how do Waco ISD address that? So the first thing that we've done is all teachers who are providing accelerated instruction, write an accelerated instruction plan in a program called Branching Minds. And so they look at that data, and they develop a plan for each student, for each subject in which the student didn't show proficiency. So if I'm Courtney Parnell, and I have failed four of my end of course exams, I have to have four plans for each subject, 30 hours each. So basically, when the plans are written, the teachers have been trained to look at the data and pick out the specific teaks in which accelerated instruction needs to be provided. So what our goal is, is we look at what the student didn't demonstrate proficiency on in the previous year, and the goal is for the teacher to provide that instruction based on their skill deficits to fill in the gaps so the student has the knowledge to pass the test this next year. And so the teacher uses, provides the accelerated instruction. We've streamlined what the resources they're using. So we've, our team have looked, and we've found the most research-based resources. And so within the district, we're using the same different, the same types of resources. And that's important for several things. Number one, we want to make sure what they're providing is research-based. But also, we know the mobility rate is huge. So we want to make sure that if a student moves from one campus to another, they're getting the same time. So then each week, after the teacher writes the plan, they provide that accelerated instruction, then they document those minutes within the branching mind. So that's how we know that we're going to get the 30 hours per the student. And reports are pulled, and the administrator on each campus can see how many minutes each of the students have received. And we provide that at the district level to each campus in January. And then again in May, our team shows them how many minutes each student has. So the next part of it, so we know how to get the plans documented, the minutes documented, but then how do we do it within the system? So for elementary, our accelerated instruction systems have many different layers. The first one is basically what we call Tier Two instruction. Those are for students who typically have failed one year. And that's typically provided in guided reading or guided math. And that's at the end of their blocks. And so the teacher's pulling those students into small group, targeting those teaks in which they didn't master the previous year. Then we have what's called SIT, or supplemental instruction. And again, just to remind y'all, this is our second year of full implementation of this across the district. In previous years, we did not have SIT teachers on campuses. So we did not have students who were getting supplemental instruction on a consistent basis. So then we have, SIT is basically for students who are considered Tier Three who have failed multiple years. And on other data sources, like BATH testing, or the Renaissance, are typically below the 10th percentile. And the other thing that elementaries are doing is many of them have built-in intervention times during the day where they're providing additional instruction. They do after-school tutorials. And so all the campuses received funding through ESAR to provide tutorials. And so the expectation is that they start in October, and again, to help work with the COVID deficits, and then summer school. So that's elementary. Any questions over that?
I have a question. How much, how much time for the SIT teachers are you asking them to pull out?
So for Tier Three instruction, they have to have 30 to 45 minutes four times a week. And it depends on the campus. Some campuses have a larger percentage of what we call Tier Three. So based on the numbers, they may only get to do the 30 minutes for four times a week. But most of them do the 45. And that's for reading and math. If I'm a student that failed reading and math, then again, I'm getting that for both subjects. Tier Two typically, again, that's the student that failed one year. That's 20 to 30 minutes, three times a week. So then secondary, and this was what's pretty exciting, is that we've again implemented some structures that we've never had before. So for, again, for your Tier Two students who have typically failed one year, they are getting the Tier Two intervention through the second half of the ELAR block for middle school because our middle schools have 90 minutes. And so that second block, we have the small group literacy, and then teachers are pulling students back and working on those skill deficits. For math, that's now being implemented in the WIN time. And again, this is our first year to have WIN time embedded in the master schedule at the high school. This is the second year for middle school. So if I'm a student who failed math, and I'm considered a Tier Two, it's primarily I failed the first year, then I'm getting the WIN time for math for 30 minutes, four times a week. And then that fifth day is typically SEL. If I'm a Tier Three student and I failed multiple years, then there in what's called a SIT lab. And again, this is the second year that we've had SIT labs implemented across the district. So they're getting 45 minutes, five times a week for math, and then also for reading. In high school, what we've done this year, which is a little bit different, is if you are an eighth grader who did not pass reading and math, then you have been placed into a supplemental instruction lab your freshman year. So every student at Waco High and University that failed eighth grade math or reading, they're now in the strategic math lab, or they're in a reading lab. Again, this is the first year we've done this. But we knew we had to address our eighth graders coming into ninth grade to fill in those gaps, those deficits, to prepare them. And this is the first year we've had WIN time at the high school. Last year, we had it added on to the fourth period. We realized that didn't work for many reasons. And so the high schools have 30 minutes. And again, they're doing the WIN time four times a week, the fifth day's SEL. But what's pretty exciting about this, it's WIN stands for what I need when I need it. So we basically have three different groups. So we've built in an enrichment component. So if I'm a student who's past STAR and past TSI, those students are working on AP, ACT prep. Then we have a second group who've passed their end of course, but they're working on TSI skills. And then we have our third group, our students who didn't pass end of course. So these are your 10th through 12th graders, and they're getting the EOC. These are the retesters. So we have them into small groups. We've tried to keep them below 15. Some of them are a little bit higher. But basically, they're pulled with a content teacher, and they're getting supplemental instruction based on those teaks they didn't master for that content. We had several students, around 200, that have failed. So what we did is we broke that up by semester. So I may get Algebra I first semester, I may get English I second semester. It depends on the student. If they failed more than two, then we have Saturday school. And so those students are going to be asked, or they have been asked to come to Saturday school. And then we have teachers there that are going to provide the intervention because we didn't have enough time during the day to provide the 30 hours for more than two subjects. And then of course, we have summer school that we counted those minutes for elementary and middle school. So that's just kind of a brief overview. Do you have any questions over high school?
Mr. Davis, or Mr. Grant?
Are we, say, one given student. How often are we getting progress feedback on that one student? And can more than just the teacher see that? Can an administrator see that?
Yes, sir. So for our Tier Three students, the ones that are in SIT labs, we require our supplemental teachers to do progress-based monitoring every two weeks minimum. So what they do is we say, here's your resource, and here's what you use to progress-based monitor. And then they have to input that data into branching minds. And so myself, the principal, my district team can look to ensure that that progress is being made. And then they have what's called a SAT committee meeting, and that's where they're supposed to review the progress of those Tier Three students. Tier Two's the same thing. What we use for Tier Two progress-based monitoring is typically the TCAs. So we look at those students getting that Tier Two intervention and see how they've done on that taught curriculum assessment for that unit. And then if they didn't, you know, show proficiency, then that's where that teacher's looking at that data. They're pulling that student back the next week, the next two weeks, and they're reteaching again what they didn't master. If I'm a SIT teacher, again, our goal is for them to be in those PLCs, or what we call our GLTs, our grade level teams for RTI. And they're having those conversations with their classroom teachers about how their kids, how their students did on that unit that taught curriculum assessments. Okay, so what do I need to do as a Tier Three teacher? Because I have to scaffold way down. What are the prerequisite skills I need to teach in order for my student to understand what's going on? what's going on in that core content? So yes, sir, we do that. And then of course, we have Renaissance that we do the three times a year. And so anytime they do that, each campus is required to have what's called a campus leadership team, where the principal, the ISs, the SIT teachers, and they meet and they look at their, their campus data. And they look at how many students fell below that 10th percentile. They're looking at how many students are Tier Three. They're looking at their students who maybe can be moved from Tier Three to Tier Two because they've made the progress in their intervention. Any other questions?
Mr. Davis, yes?
Yes, sir. I appreciate the breakdown of how all this works, I really do. I was going to ask, like, how does this work with night school? Because I know the high schools are doing night school. And also, how is Saturday school attendance looking? Because I know we have issues with Saturday school as well.
Yes, sir. So the night school, both of the campuses have worked out at 30-minute time within that day that those students who haven't, who need to retest for EOC will be pulled back and have 30 minutes of what we call accelerated instruction. Saturday school, this will be the second week they've started. I will tell you, both high schools have worked hard. The APs at University High School, we developed a letter and we asked them to have face-to-face conferences with the students and tell them the why behind this. And that's the big thing that we've tried to explain to the interventionists, to the campuses. Yeah, 4545 is there, and the legislator passed it, but it's, it's not all of it. The importance, the why is because we need our students to pass STAR. We need our students to pass end of course so we can graduate. And so, and yeah, 4545 was passed, but the intent of the law was to get schools, hold them accountable to get where they are. So, and that's what they're doing for night school. Saturday school, we'll see. We've had conversations with both high schools, and they've reached out to the students. And the expectation is if they're not attending, that APs should reach out to that student and that family again and say, hey, you're not coming, we need you to come. You know, again, and the purpose, why do you need to come? Yeah, you need to come because you need the 30 hours, but we want you to pass your end of course, because we want you to graduate high school. So that's the most important thing we're trying to communicate.
And then on your measures, are we seeing a lot of our Tier Three students go to Tier Two and Tier Two to One? Are we seeing that growth that we're looking for so far?
We are. I think you saw it in accountability.
Yeah, because these, these 9,125 kids tests, this is the kids in the systems for the very first year that gave us the accountability growth. So I asked Ms. Parnell to kind of give us the background of what was the work that went into getting the growth, and it was getting growth, as she described, at all levels. We expected the students who were on track to grow, the students who were in Tier Two to get back on track and grow, and then Tier Three. So the output is that account of the growth for every campus, for each campus.
We have work to do. I'm not going to tell you we don't. We know, I have an expectation of my vision is that my Tier Three students will grow a year to two years within a year, and that's what we've communicated to our supplemental instruction teachers. So yes, we saw growth. Yes, we know, we still have lots of work to do.
I actually have a question for you guys, if you would stay here one second. So I'm looking at kind of the desegregation of the data in terms of, hey, you want your students to have, you know, be grouped according to objective and not reaching the proficiency. But I'm looking at that, and I'm seeing what goes off in my head is time, 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 time. This is a lot of desegregation of data. Are our teachers being required to do this, administrators? Is there, so that was the first question. Second question, sorry, is, is there a program that will do this for them? So is there some type of program that will say, our students didn't make, this group of students in this one class did not get this one objective, and kind of group students for them so that, you know, I'm just looking at this data, and I'm like, our, our teachers, our administrators, they need real fast data, quick feedback. They don't need to be sitting there disaggregating it, because that is, I mean, that will just suck the time out of the room.
We've taught the teachers and administrators ways to get to the point with data. So a lot of coaching and training I've done with them is we could spend all day grinding on, is 50% good or bad? Like, does that mean the kids can or can't? So we've come up with different measures to know. When we look at a TCA, how do we know the kids are actually doing it? We can get down to reshaping the lesson or building the intervention. But let's talk a little bit more about the mix of teacher time and resources we provided that will help them with this. But I think that the fact that the teachers did this work, no matter how many resources we gave them, I really wanted these two slides in here to show you, that growth number is profound, and it's the output of this work, these two slots. Courtney, what's your?
Yeah.
Could I add a little bit here? So this is a hot topic for the upcoming legislative session. House Bill 4545 was huge stressor across the state, huge stressor for teachers, and really, I mean, added to a plate that was already full. And so I think your, your point is well taken. It's a, it takes a lot of time to do this, and we've had a lot of challenges in trying to figure it out. And Courtney and Denise and the CNI team have done a beautiful job, and she just laid all that out for you. But this is no small feat to make this happen, and it is a lot of work for our teachers. And so I don't know what will happen in the legislative session, but that's a conversation that I'll be listening, will be listening for, and hopefully engaging in this debate. But it is a, it's a hot topic, let's just say that. And I know Denise could speak to some more about that, just the challenges we've had and others have had. I mean, if you have a kid that fails more than two tests, how are you going to fit in all the remediation that's required by the state?
And then that leads to some parental concerns, because if a high schooler failed four out of five, they can't graduate without those tests. It really is a barrier. It really is the ultimate high stakes. And some of our kids, if they're not passing it, may have struggles. And think about this, you could be a really smart, hard-working kid. By the fourth time you took a test, how are you approaching that test? Do you really feel like you're ever going to get over that hurdle? So the high school faces some motivational pieces to that too, about how the kids feel about having to do this. And then it takes electives away, and we want them in the electives, which leads to the CCMR, them getting certified and passing TSI. We want the success at the end, but the, there are some barriers, and 4545 just added to those high school barriers, I think, a great deal, which is why Courtney and those teams revisited what the high school was doing and said, okay, this didn't work, this did work. But our growth outcome was after we systemically required the SIT and all those other things, and the teachers this year were ready. The ones who returned said, thank you for the retention bonus. The ones who returned had already been through this, and they were like, okay, who are my kids' minutes? You know, they kind of had a groove of what to expect. But it is a huge amount of work, and so they, they did the work. So that growth really represents, it is the numerical output of all that they did, because they grew by TEA's definition of growth, not Waco ISD's. I might not have had so huge a goal for some of our kids. A lot of our kids grew two years. They accelerated growth, they grew two years. That's in one year. So the systems really gave us a good output.
I just, I do want to thank you, I don't want my, kind of how strong I was coming out to not express my gratitude for the growth that is happening. I just look at all this, and I'm like, it's an organizational, excuse the word, nightmare. It is a lot of time and a lot of work. So I guess my, my encouragement would be that we really do look at, okay, what kind of computer programs are there? You know, what, how can we get teachers, administrators, real-time data so they don't have to necessarily sit there and kind of do it? But some automated thing. Obviously, you guys are the experts in this. I am not. I'm so thankful for the work that you guys have done and the direction and the leadership. It is, I just look at this, and I'm like, in my mind, I'm like, oh my, what? How do you, it's a lot. But just as, as we continue to move forward in kind of this individualized education plan specifically for students, really just want to encourage the administration to look into, hey, how are there computer programs that we can help implement? You know, just kind of looking at this cross-sector to where we can really kind of ease the burden of some of this desegregation from our teachers and our administrators.
And, and we do have that now. So, so for instance, the Renaissance, they do three times a year. There's several reports you can print. You can print, print an instructional planning report that tells you specifically the focus skills that I need to work on, and then you can correlate them to the teaks. There's a report that prints state standards, so it correlates the focus still to the state standards. It color codes it by red, green, and yellow. So if I'm red, I know this is the state standard I need to focus on. Then we have Renaissance, there was one other. And all of our SIT teachers have Reading Plus for the English. Again, that's a diagnostic. It specifically states the target skills they need to work on. And then within the math, at the secondary and elementary, we've implemented I-Ruddy. Again, it gives you the diagnostic, it tells them the skills they need to work on, and then it scaffolds a skill for them. So yes, we, we've really tried to provide the resources to the teachers so they don't have to spend the time to come up with it. But I do hear you. And I will tell you, the branching minds is a great program, because you basically write a plan and you can group it to your group of students, so you're not having to do multiple plans. So, but we do, we try to be cognizant of that, because it is a heavy lift for teachers, and we know that. And even now that it rolled into accountability, you know, it's even be a bigger, bigger, heavy lift. But yes, ma'am, we will definitely continue to work on that.
And what I love about branching minds is that it follows the kid's enrollment. So that plan is in there, but if the kid leaves and goes from one elementary campus to another, within the next day, that plan is already in there. And that continuity for our mobile kids across different campuses is really important. And it even works on the high school level if a student goes from, let's say, Wiley to, back to Waco High. The plan is there for Wiley to continue to work off of. There's the least interruption possible for everybody having access to the data. So that kind of, making sure the systems are quick, and then reducing the number of data points teachers look at has been my personal mission. If one thing can give us many data points, we don't need to over-test our kids, and we don't need teachers to have to weed through it. It has to be pretty teacher-friendly. So we're always taking teacher input. I know Courtney is on the programs we use and on the data we use, and that's really important to us as well.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Bill?
Yes.
Thank you for the report. I said, thank you for the report. That was great.
I do have one more question. Is it possible for a student to get their required hours done during summer school so they can be in whatever elective they would want to be during the year? So is that something we encourage for students to kind of come to summer school to get their required hours done?
Yeah, and so all the summer school hours counted, but for example, it was about a 10-hour period. Some were 15, depending on how long we offered summer school. So we did count those hours. If the, the students pass end of course in December, and they don't have their 30 hours, then it's a checkbox, you're done. You don't have to go back and do it. So that's why we're really trying to encourage, you know, those students to come to Saturday school. So guess what? You're done in December. You don't, you know, and then we can move you. And, you know, the freshmen that are in labs, unfortunately, will have to wait till the scores come out. But I feel like that's going to be impactful, because again, that's the first year the high schools have done that, to try to build that gap. Thank you.
I have one quick question. Are we tracking those hours the same way across the district?
Yes, sir. That's the branching minds tool that we use. And so each week, the teachers have to go in and input the number of minutes, and if a student's not there, then they can, you know, note that that student was absent. If the student chose not to participate, then they can make those notes too. So yes, sir, we did that uniform structure within branching minds.
Okay.
And then again, we can print those reports and see how many minutes.
And so my final reason for having Ms. Parnell talk to you is because TEA is changing the accountability system, and they are adding 4545 to the accountability system. So we're already looking at the data and working on the data for our students, because a child has to be in this remediation, even if it's because they were absent. So that's what we're really trying to do at the high schools, get the kids to take the tests, because that 86% of social studies is creating a sort of backlog because of attendance.
Ms. Bill, I was wondering if the administration, whenever TEA decides, that they're going to actually give us the system and how to kind of, just, if you guys could just kind of give us a report and help us kind of get a heads up. I know they-
Late fall is when they're going to decide on things and release them, but they have let us know some non-negotiables, some things that are going to happen. So we've already begun to make moves, like they're changing growth.
Great.
Lot of success in the state, so we change growth. And so I've already had the campuses focusing on the new way to do growth, you know, with targets and all that, to be sure that we're at least moving. Teachers have a direction, and they're not waiting until December for that. And then in January, TEA will take our current data and shake it out into a what-if. So I'll come and present that to you. What if the new accountability system was in place? What letter grades do we have? That's going to help us be very strategic, knowing that in January, because by then decisions will be open for public comment. So relatively final is what I would say about that.
Let's hope. So thank you.
But I do keep up on all that for Dr. Concanon, for you, and for our teachers and students.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Any other questions? Okay. We'll move on to our next item, review discussed required district intruder detection audit report findings. Dr. Concanon.
Yes, this is a report-only item requirement of the Texas School Safety Center and the state. So you guys may have heard that on June the 1st, that the governor instructed the Texas School Safety Center to conduct random inspections of schools, and specifically unannounced intruder detection audits, and really looking for weak points within the school building. And so they, the, the auditors who are working through the regional educational service centers are looking at checking exterior doors. They are looking to see if they're stopped from gaining access to the campus. They're looking to see if identification is required at the front office, whether or not the interior classroom doors are locked, if the district has such a policy. And then they're checking the documentation for the exterior weekly door sweeps that we are now doing at the direction of the state. So we had an audit, we had two audits in September, two of our campuses, and there was a finding at Waco High School. There was an exterior door that was, was noted that it was locked but swollen, with no other findings on our preliminary report that we got for the campus. So we, we worked with service center and got some more information. Basically, the locking mechanism on the door itself was operating, but it didn't fully catch at that particular time that it was inspected. And so Facilities Department has checked that door. It was adjusted immediately. They've re-inspected all of the other doors at Waco High School. We do have some doors that we want to replace so that that doesn't happen again. And then, and Sterling McGruder is here, our principal, he was present at the audit, at the audit. We also learned that we had a finding for an interior door, and I just want to say that that was as a result of a substitute teacher who had to go to the restroom. And so asked the, the teacher next door to cover, and the teacher was watching both classrooms, but because the door was not closed, we had a finding for that. So there are some things to be worked out at the state level with these audits, and I was in a superintendent's meeting yesterday at Region 12 with other superintendents, and we discussed all kinds of audit findings and how this is working. So anyway, all of that to say, we have a corrective action plan that will be due to the Texas School Safety Center within 45 days for those things that I've mentioned. And we'll have to meet with our District Safety Committee and talk about our plans to improve, and we will get that done.
Great. Announcements, number 12, Mr. DeBier.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to begin announcements tonight, actually, on a little bit of a personal note. My family is moving to Colorado, and so this will be my last meeting with the Board of Trustees. And I want to say thank you to our employees, our students, who have trusted me over the last five years to help tell their stories and support their work. It has been incredible to see up close what our staff, what our students do every day. I have always been optimistic about the future for Waco ISD, but I'm more optimistic than ever, and that's reinforced tonight, hearing about the status of the bond projects that are underway, hearing about the work that's being done to accelerate instruction. So it's a great place. I'm excited about it, and it's hard to walk away. But one of the things that does make it a little bit easier to leave is that I get to introduce you to the district's next Chief of Staff, who is Elizabeth Cox. Elizabeth came to public education from politics. She served as the Central Texas Regional Deputy Director for a United States Senator. And then in public education, for the last about five years, we've had the opportunity to work together on a number of issues that have reached across districts, that touch on education policy in the state. And the thing I can tell you is that she embodies that piece of the district's mission to value all and empower all. She focuses on building relationships that truly do value all with an impurpose of empowering all, empowering students to be successful, and just as importantly, empowering staff and- all, empowering students to be successful, and just as importantly, empowering staff and employees to do the things that can help our students be successful today and down the road as they walk across the graduation stage and lead productive lives. So, very excited to be introducing Elizabeth tonight and excited for you to get a chance to meet her. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Well, after that, after Kyle DeBeere gives you that kind of introduction, I'm, I'm a little choked up, especially to see him go. Kyle has not only set an incredible example within this district. But, I can tell you, as someone that was brought to school business in a lot of ways by Mr. DeBeere, I couldn't have made it. And I know a lot of other people across the state wouldn't have made it through the last few years that school communicators have had without his support. So, thank you, Kyle, from everyone in Region 12 and I know beyond. So, I have the fun opportunity tonight to tell you about a few upcoming exciting things. First off, Tuesday, October 4th, our incredible Waco ISD PD will be hosting their National Night Out celebration from 6:00 to 8:00 at their North Waco Annex location. Fun for the whole family, a great opportunity. Sandy, Chief Williams, and their team are planning a lot of fun. So, I hope you'd get out to see it. The groundbreaking for new Waco, for the new Waco High School, Friday, October 7th. We have a lot of different district departments led up by our communications team planning an exceptional community celebration to really celebrate this exciting next step. The voter registration deadline for the November elections is coming up on October 11th. Don't, don't forget. Mark your calendars. And a few quick highlights of fine arts, our high school theater and choir programs will be performing musicals. Waco High Into the Woods will be joining forces there with choir and theater on October 13th through 16th. Again, that's Waco High Into the Woods for their musical. University High is the next weekend. Moana Junior, October 20th through 22nd. And we can get you more information if you need it. And then, I cannot leave out band. Band heads to the UIL Marching Regional Contest at Midway. Fans of both the Waco and University High bands can see them at that competition on Saturday, October 15th in the evening. It's going to be a busy month. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Cox. Welcome. We are so excited to have you here. And Mr. DeBeere, we are beyond thankful for these last five years of your service in Waco ISD. It has been profound. It has been steady. It has been unlike anything. I think yesterday, Dr. Cannon said, you're definitely like a one percenter. And I thought, absolutely. Just a skill set and your unique qualities are just really, we're going to miss you, you and your family. We've gotten the chance to meet your, your family over these last five years and am, was thrilled to get to know them better and just really know that you're going to be successful wherever you go. So, thank you for your service. Okay. With that, we are adjourned.